Good evening. I'd like to call to order the San Carlos City Council meeting for September 24, 2018, and ask that you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our mayor, Bob Grisilli, is traveling and unable to join us this evening, so I will be chairing the meeting. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda tonight?
There are no changes this evening, Mr. Vice Mayor, however, our report to council from our fire staff may have to be pushed on the fly as they're giving that same presentation at this very moment in Redwood City and then heading directly over here.
That sounds good. Any changes from the dais?
Nope.
Okay, then we'll move on to Item 4 Presentations. We'll start with Item 4A, a welcome to Administrative Sergeant Jacob Trickett, and I will welcome our Police Chief Mark Derry.
Good evening, council and city staff. I would like to introduce our new Administrative Sergeant here in the San Carlos Police Bureau, Jacob Trickett. And I'll tell you a little bit about Jake. Jacob was born in Newport Beach, California, in July of 1987. Yes, I said that, 1987. He graduated from Rockland High School in 2005 and continued to study at Sierra College. In March of 2008, Jake moved to San Mateo County and joined the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office as a deputy sheriff trainee. In 2010, Jake purchased his first house here in the city of San Carlos and still resides here today. He spent the last 10 years working at varieties of assignments, including corrections, patrol, the detective with the Crime Suppression Unit, court security, and was duly sworn as United States Deputy Marshal with the Northern California U.S. Marshals Fugitive Task Force. Jake was promoted to Sheriff's Sergeant in March of 2018 and assigned to the Corrections Division of the Sheriff's Office. Jake has also held ancillary responsibilities, including field training officer, a member of our Sheriff's Firearms Range Staff, first aid and first aid training coordinator. While at the Sheriff's Office, Jake has also continued his college education and obtained a Bachelor of Science degree in Criminal Justice Management from Union Institute University in 2014. In his spare time, Jake enjoys traveling the great outdoors and spending time with his wife Erin and their six-year-old black lab or so. Ladies and gentlemen, Sergeant Jacob Trickett. Do you have any questions for Jake or anything?
Thank you, Cameron. Welcome again, Jake, since I've met you before several times. I just wanted to share with my colleagues that I actually first met Jake when I was manning the council booth, I think it was a week ago, down at the farmer's market. And there was a little situation that he had to deal with, and he handled it with such aplomb that I didn't even notice that it had been resolved, which was great. And I was very impressed when I went up to talk to him afterwards about the process that he had used and what his evaluation was and how he handled the situation. In fact, I think he even stopped by Mark's office the next day and said that I was very impressed, continued to be impressed with the high level of training and expertise that the Sheriff's Department provides us. So it was a great way to meet somebody. Welcome aboard.
Thanks, sir.
And I'll just add my welcome as well. Very impressive credentials and also very exciting that you've lived in the community for a long time, so thank you and welcome, and we look forward to your service.
And welcome from me as well. Stop by Pete sometime, we'll have coffee.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on now to Item 4B, and we'll receive a presentation on a recent FAA noise study at the San Carlos Airport.
Good evening, city council and city staff. I'm Gretchen Kelly. I'm the airport manager at the San Carlos Airport. We appreciate you inviting us to be here tonight to present on the FAA-funded Part 150 Noise Study, which is kind of a long title, but this study's been really important to us at the airport, and we really appreciate the involvement from the city of San Carlos. Tara or her staff have been at each of our meetings, and we've had a lot of input from residents in San Carlos, which we really appreciate, and we've had a chance to work with them about noise issues. I'm going to introduce Dave Fitz, who's our expert, our consultant from Kaufman Associates, and Kaufman is managing the noise study for us.
Good evening, Dave. I'm going to just take a few moments and tell you a little bit about the study. The study is funded largely by grant from the Federal Aviation Administration through the Airport Improvement Program, or AIP. This study is exclusively, one of the unique studies that FAA does that's exclusively for the benefit of a community. But as doing any study with federal funds, there are lots of rules. So that's important, that'll be an important part, is we go through some of these recommendations. And I don't mind being interrupted if you have a question. I like to make sure that everything is explained thoroughly. So with that, I'll start and go through the process that we have outlined out here. This is a flow diagram of how we proceeded through this study. We start out on the very left side there with the project initiation, and each time that we came out here for meetings or milestones, we had a planning advisory committee, and that was, as Gretchen mentioned, made up of not only area jurisdictions, the Federal Aviation Administration representatives from the airport. We wanted to make sure that various city planning were involved, as well as interested citizens from different neighborhood organizations. So we had a very dynamic group of about 20 folks that came in and critiqued our work and provided us feedback as we developed this study. We also, on that following, on that same evening after the planning advisory committee, we also had public workshops. Essentially, we'd have a series of display boards up and the same material that the planning advisory committee would see, but this would just be a way for the community to come out and ask questions, provide feedback, and give us our concerns and issues that they wanted us to try and address as part of the study. The first chunk of this study, the inventory, aircraft noise and noise impacts, really makes the first document. There's two final documents that come out of a study like this. The first one is called the Noise Exposure Map Document. That's been officially submitted to FAA for their review and acceptance. They don't approve it, they just make sure that we follow the rules in developing it. And essentially, what that first chunk of the study is, is kind of the triage, if you will, defining the problem. How bad is the noise within how FAA defines noise? And FAA has some very significant rules on how we do that and how we develop that. We use a noise model that they require us to use as part of that to develop what they call noise exposure contours, or basically a band that's exclusively generated by aircraft noise. So anything from run-ups to departure noise and approach noise. That all goes into that. We look at a year's worth of operations and divide that by 365, so we have that average days' worth of operations. Again, all of those are rules that we have to follow to define that noise picture, if you will, and that picture is important because the second half of the study looks at alternatives to address any issues that come out of that. Now unfortunately, when FAA defines those rules, it doesn't always reach out to everyone that is impacted by it or annoyed by aircraft overflights or other things. The airport is very good about trying to address those, but FAA draws their line in the sand at 65. CNL, which is a noise metric that they require us to use. The great thing about the CNL noise metric is it takes into account not only the frequency of operations, but the time of day that they occur. So if an operation happens in the evening time, that evening is defined by 7 to 10, and nighttime noise from 10 until 7:00 a.m. So it penalizes those events, basically adds more noise to them because they have a tendency to be more annoying, folks are generally home in the evenings, and they're sleeping at night.
Can I just ask, channeling the mayor who's not here but who is a foe of acronyms, what does CNEL stand for?
Great question. Community Noise Equivalent Level. So in generating that noise metric with those penalties, so an evening event is basically three times what a daytime event is, and a nighttime event is 10 times. So it really does add to the overall noise footprint around an airport because of those penalties. So with that, we define our noise footprint, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. The rest of the process is used to, how can we handle that? Are there things that we can do? And FAA has us look at mandatory things, both on land use and on noise abatement. And the reason why that's important is if you've defined a bunch of noise abatement procedures and then you build underneath it with a lot of uses that are noise-sensitive, you've really shocked yourself in the foot, so to speak. So they want us to do a two-fold analysis to look at both land use and noise abatement. After we look at those alternatives, again, we'll have workshops and we'll meet with technical expertise and technical conferences along the way. So we have that expertise, both on land use planning, as well as pilots and noise abatement, to make sure that we understand, and are there any constraints? There is a pretty big constraint in this area. It's called San Francisco International Airport. So how they go, so goes every other airport in the region. So they are the big dog on the block, so when they operate...
In March of 2008, Jake moved to San Mateo County and joined the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office as a deputy sheriff trainee. In 2010, Jake purchased his first house here in the city of San Carlos and still resides here today. He spent the last 10 years working on a variety of assignments, including corrections, patrol, the detective with the crime suppression unit, court security, and was duly sworn as United States Deputy Marshal with the Northern California U.S. Marshals Fugitive Task Force. Jake was promoted to sheriff sergeant in March of 2018 and assigned to the Corrections Division of the Sheriff's Office. Jake has also held ancillary responsibilities, including field training officer, a member of our sheriff's firearms range staff, first aid and first aid training coordinator. While at the Sheriff's Office, Jake has also continued his college education and obtained a Bachelor of Science degree in Criminal Justice Management from Union Institute University in 2014. In his spare time, Jake enjoys traveling, the great outdoors, and spending time with his wife Erin and their six-year-old black lab or so. Ladies and gentlemen, Sergeant Jacob Trickett.
Do you have any questions for Jake or anything? Mr. Olber?
Thank you, Cameron. Welcome again, Jake, since I've met you before several times. I just wanted to share with my colleagues that I actually first met Jake when I was manning the council booth, I think it was a week ago, down at the farmer's market. And there was a little situation that he had to deal with, and he handled it with such aplomb that I didn't even notice that it had been resolved, which was great. And I was very impressed when I went up to talk to him afterwards about sort of the process that he had used and what his evaluation was and how he handled the situation. In fact, I even stopped by Mark's office the next day and said that I was very impressed, continue to be impressed with the high level of training and expertise that the Sheriff's Department provides us. So it was a great way to meet somebody. Welcome aboard.
Thanks, sir.
And I'll just add my welcome as well. Very impressive credentials and also very exciting that you've lived in the community for a long time. So thank you and welcome, and we look forward to your service.
And welcome from me as well. Stop by Pete sometime, we'll have coffee.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on now to item 4B, and we'll receive a presentation on a recent FAA noise study at the San Carlos Airport. Good evening.
Good evening, City Council and City staff. Thank you very much. I'm Gretchen Kelly. I'm the airport manager at the San Carlos Airport. We appreciate you inviting us to be here tonight to present on the FAA-funded Part 150 Noise Study, which is kind of a long title, but this study's been really important to us at the airport and we really appreciate the involvement from the city of San Carlos. Tara or her staff have been at each of our meetings, and we've had a lot of input from residents in San Carlos, which we really appreciate, and we've had a chance to work with them about noise issues. I'm going to introduce Dave Fitz, who's our expert, our consultant from Kaufman Associates, and Kaufman is managing the noise study for us.
Good evening to you.
I'm going to just take a few moments and tell you a little bit about the study. This study is funded largely by grant from the Federal Aviation Administration through the Airport Improvement Program, or AIP. This study is exclusively, one of the unique studies that FAA does that's exclusively for the benefit of a community. But as doing any study with federal funds, there are lots of rules. So that's important, that'll be an important part as we kind of go through some of these recommendations. And I don't mind being interrupted if you have a question. I like to make sure that everything is explained thoroughly. So with that, I'll start and go through the process that we have outlined out here. This is kind of a flow diagram of how we proceeded through this study. We start out on the very left side there with the project initiation, and each time that we had, came out here for meetings or milestones, we had a planning advisory committee, and that was, as Gretchen mentioned, made up of not only area jurisdictions, the Federal Aviation Administration representatives from the airport. We wanted to make sure that various city planning were involved, as well as interested citizens from different neighborhood organizations. So we had a very dynamic group of about 20 folks that came in and critiqued our work and provided us feedback as we developed this study. We also, on that following, on that same evening, after the planning advisory committee, we also had public workshops. Essentially, we'd have a series of display boards up and the same material that the planning advisory committee would see, but this would just be a way for the community to come out and ask questions, provide feedback, and give us our concerns and issues that they wanted us to try and address as part of the study. The first chunk of this study, the inventory, aircraft noise and noise impacts, really makes the first document. There's two final documents that come out of a study like this. The first one is called the Noise Exposure Map Document. That's been officially submitted to FAA for their review and acceptance. They don't approve it, they just make sure that we follow the rules in developing it. And essentially, what that first chunk of the study is kind of the triage, if you will, defining the problem. How bad is the noise within how FAA defines noise? And FAA has some very significant rules on how we do that and how we develop that. We use a noise model that they require us to use as part of that to develop what they call noise exposure contours, or basically a band that's exclusively generated by aircraft noise. So anything from run-ups to, you know, departure noise and approach noise, that all goes into that. We look at a year's worth of operations and divide that by 365, so we have that average days' worth of operations. Again, all of those are rules that we have to follow to define that noise picture, if you will. And that picture is important because the second half of the study looks at alternatives to address any issues that come out of that. Now unfortunately, when FAA defines those rules, it doesn't always reach out to everyone that is impacted by it or annoyed by aircraft overflights or other things. The airport is very good about trying to address those, but FAA kind of draws their line in the sand at 65. CNEL, which is a noise metric that they require us to use. The great thing about the CNEL noise metric is it takes into account not only the frequency of operations, but the time of day that they occur. So if an operation happens in the evening time, that's, an evening is defined by 7:00 to 10:00, and nighttime noise from 10:00 until 7:00 a.m. So it penalizes those events, basically adds more noise to them because they have a tendency to be more annoying, folks are generally home in the evenings, and they're sleeping at night.
Can I just ask, channeling the mayor who's not here but who is a foe of acronyms, what does CNEL stand for?
Great question. Community Noise Equivalent Level. So in generating those noise metric, that noise metric, with those penalties, so an evening event is basically three times what a daytime event is, and a nighttime event is 10 times. So it really does add to the overall noise footprint around an airport because of those penalties. So with that, we define our noise footprint, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. The rest of the process is used, how can we handle that? Are there things that we can do? And FAA has us look at mandatory things, both on land use and on noise abatement. And the reason why that's important is if you've defined a bunch of noise abatement procedures and then you build underneath it with a lot of uses that are noise sensitive, you've really kind of shocked yourself in the foot, so to speak. So they want us to do a two-fold analysis to look at both land use and noise abatement. After we look at those alternatives, again, we'll have workshops and we will meet with technical expertise and technical conferences along the way. So we have that expertise, both on land use planning, as well as pilots and noise abatement, to make sure that we understand, and are there any constraints? There is a pretty big constraint in this area. It's called San Francisco International Airport. So how they go, so goes every other airport in the region. So they are the big dog on the block, so when they operate in a particular direction, everyone else gets to operate in that direction, whether you like it or not. They also control the airspace in this area. So everything up to a certain altitude is San Francisco International Airport.
Through the chair, if I may, thank you. I had heard at some point during various conversations I've had over the years about the situation in San Carlos Airport, that I guess one of the guiding elements for how airports like San Carlos Airport are managed is a desire to limit the use of, I guess in my sense, San Francisco Airport runways by less than large aircraft. In other words, that there's something in the way the FAA administers things that they're trying, you know, I guess slots for landing and taking off are very precious, but they're occupied by a plane regardless of whether it's a big jumbo jet or a small plane. And so there's a policy mandate to try and shift the smaller planes away from the major airports, even though in other situations, those planes might go to a major airport. I'm just wondering if you could comment on that.
Yes, that is an overall philosophy that airports like SFO or San Francisco International Airport, they handle the rather large aircraft, commercial service aircraft, cargo aircraft, and you really do want to separate that. A good analogy is, how many people ride bicycle or have ridden bicycle? I know that there's a few of us, right? Imagine trying to merge onto the interstate on your bicycle. Now, it can be done, and it can be done safely, but a truck and a bicycle are two very, very different things. They operate differently, their speeds are different, how they handle wind and all of those things, the amount of metal around you, all of those things. Well, that's a small airplane versus a big airplane. And so because they operate so differently and speeds are so different, a big airplane like that's going to catch up to a small one real quick. So FAA's response is to separate those distances tremendously.
So just one little follow-up question. So therefore, in this specific case, then, is it the case that operations like what Surfair was running are forbidden from using SFO?
The type of aircraft, they can use SFO, yes. The reason they don't is because they're a low, they would be a lower priority, and they kind of gum up the works because they have slower approach speeds and slower departure speeds. So again, they have to be separated out and be sequenced in. So for them, their operation model is to be able to get in and get out. They also don't like to have the security and other issues that have to go with being in an airport that certification level, they call it Part 139, where they have a lot of different requirements. So it goes into a really deep...
I'm going to interrupt because I don't want to divert your presentation too much, but the reason I was asking it is, and it sort of confirms what I thought I had understood, in a sense, the residents of San Carlos who feel imposed upon by Surfair in part are paying the price that SFO is choosing not to handle, and the airline is choosing not to fly in and out of there. And so in a sense, their sort of, their local concerns are being impacted by regional issues.
I don't think it's so much to try, SFO can't deny Surfair, no more than San Carlos can deny Surfair. If Surfair wanted to serve SFO, they certainly had the right to do that. Surfair chose San Carlos just like it did many other airports where I've done similar presentations for, and it really is, they're serving a niche market, and that niche market happened to be served out of San Carlos at this point. And we'll talk about Surfair here in a minute in a little bit more detail. But SFO wouldn't deny it. If they wanted to come in, they certainly could serve them. That was a choice that, and their business model for Surfair, to go to an airport that they could operate out of without a lot of the constraints that SFO would have, i.e. they would have to sit and idle at the end of a runway until all of these big aircraft could come in before they would have a big enough window to get their aircraft out. They would be sitting, spinning, and circling until they would get a big enough window to land. That all costs money for a small operator like Surfair. So there's some economics that go with that, but SFO did not in any way say, "No, you can't come here." It's more of how busy an airport is.
I appreciate the explanation, and I'd love to just kind of get back to noise.
Yes, let's just do that. Okay, so this, again, there's two documents here. The last half comes and becomes a noise compatibility program. So right now, we're at the very end, and that's where there's a public hearing and a public workshop. Those are scheduled for September 26th, and the public workshop basically is similar to the workshops we had before. We'll have display material, and people can come in and do a question and answer for the first half hour, and then the last hour, we'll have a court reporter, and people can come in and give their comments on the record on the study material, the results, and the recommendations. So with that, let's talk about the first. The noise exposure maps, we had two conditions. Both of these are required under FAA rules. The first is our base year, which was 2017, our existing condition, and then we're required to do a five-year forecast condition. So that first baseline condition, you can see those noise exposure contours that I mentioned, and that community noise equivalent level or CNEL level, FAA requires us to go out to 65. The county did choose to go out and do the 60. We had to put those in a separate appendix to show where the 60 is. The reason the 60 is important, that's also part of the county's airport land use compatibility plan. So that information is available for that plan if it needs to be updated. And as you can see, the noise exposure contours, the noise sensitive are all colored, whether they're single-family, multifamily, mixed use. We also show any schools, places of worship, historic structures, all of those things are required to be shown on those maps. The noise exposure contours do not impact any of those noise sensitive uses, and that's going to be important because FAA's, that's FAA's threshold of significance is the 65.
Where does the 60 line fall?
The 60 line is slightly larger, and I wish I would have shown you the graphic. I can pull that out of here and show it to you individually. I didn't have it as part of the slide, but I'm happy to give you a copy of what I have in my book. The 65 for the 2022, again, is slightly larger. Operations were forecast to increase from 105,000 to 109 in five years. Interestingly enough, since we've done our baseline, a couple of things have happened, and operations have actually decreased about 7%. Strangely, most of that is Surfair's operations, which have largely stopped because of some financial reasons. So air taxi operations, when we started, Surfair was in full operation. Since they've stopped operation, it's down to 13,000, so that's where most of the drop in operations are. There's been a small decline in some of the general aviation operations. The helicopter training operator also discontinued his operation there, so there's not any helicopter training operations as well. So all of those things, we still have those in our model, but just in case they come back, but for the most part, right now, we're overpredicting a little bit just on recent decline in activity for those uses. So as you can see, and looking at all the noise sensitive uses that are in the surrounding area, none of them fall within those significant noise contours. And that's going to be important for FAA when we start looking at alternatives, because their judge on whether they'll accept a noise abatement procedure is, how does it benefit? Do we remove any noise sensitive land uses from our contours? And if the answer is no, with that procedure, they won't approve that procedure. So that's really, really important. That kind of moves on to our next phase where we start looking at the compatibility plan and program. Noise abatement, when we looked at all of the possible noise abatement stuff and all the volunteer procedures that they have in place right now, trying to make any of those mandatory, FAA would say no, because we already have zero as an impact on noise sensitive land uses. So we can't make it any better than zero as far as FAA is concerned. That being said, the issue of noise concerns still exists around this area, not only in San Carlos, but the other communities around the airport. So there, and the airport and the county are sensitive to that, and they want to make sure that they can do as much as they can within this program. So we've split this program up a little bit. I'm going to touch on the noise abate, or land use element and program element first.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
You don't have to go back to it, but in the context of those noise profile maps that you were showing, since there were regular complaints, as I understand it, from various eastside residents about noise level, that things that they felt were noisy, what CNEL levels did those complaints correspond to? Obviously, they didn't correspond to 65 or greater, because then they would have shown up in your study or something.
Absolutely, and we actually did field measurements, and most of those were in the 50s, some were in the 40s. So we actually did some field measurements to match up with the modeling that we did, and actually did some follow-up measurements based on concerns with Surfair's operations, and found that in most cases, the automobile traffic and other background noises were every bit as intrusive as some of the airplanes.
And so is the CNEL scale roughly like a dB scale, which is logarithmic?
It is, it is a decimal scale.
So I guess in practice, if complaints were being registered in the 40 and 50 CNEL level, there's actually, the actual noise levels could be quite a bit higher than what people were complaining about, and the FAA would still say, "That is no noise here. There's no actionable noise here."
That's correct. You nailed it right there. Are there any other questions? Okay, let's move on to land use. Okay, we had a few land use measures. The first is really to encourage some updates for both the city of San Carlos and Redwood City to include the noise exposure maps, and in particular, the long-range one, in their planning to avoid adding or the potential of adding any noise sensitive land uses within those contours, if at all possible. Recommendation two is to encourage Redwood City to incorporate some project review guidelines. The city of San Carlos already has some of those. This is just something to make it consistent, to make sure that any proposed development within those contours looks specifically at and makes sure that noise is considered in those project reviews. Measure three has to do with the county and Airport Land Use Commission adopted an update to their Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan probably about three or four years ago now. But the 2022 contours are a little bit larger than that, and until they update a 20-year forecast contour, we're suggesting that the 2022 contours be used in an interim basis for their land use planning reviews. Now, for the program management element, we have a couple, and program management really is, once you start down this path with developing a noise compatibility study, FAA likes you to maintain it. And one of those is to make sure that they continue their noise complaint handling system, making sure that noise complaints are followed up and staff does a really good job. A lot of times, they can also dovetail with what SFO does with their flight tracking system to be able to check out particular operations and things like that, so there is a lot of follow-up done by staff. This is a requirement as part of doing a study. FAA wants you to maintain it, so they'll want you to come back as these contours get out of date to make sure that nothing has changed significantly. So there's a measure in here to update the noise exposure maps in the five-to-10-year range, and also to monitor implementation, follow-up with the jurisdictions on incorporation of the noise contours and project review guidelines. And the cost of that, again, FAA pays the lion's share, 90%. San Mateo County would follow up with that 10%. Caltrans often kicks in a little bit sometimes, too, depending on what type of study it is. Now, there's some local measures here that are important. As I mentioned, anything on the noise abatement side, FAA would decline simply on the premise, again, that we're not removing noise sensitive land uses from the 65. So we have set a series of measures that are just for local responsibility only. They won't be formally submitted to FAA for their review and approval. So the first one is to continue to distribute a pilot brochure and maintain the on-airport signage that encourages pilots to fly friendly. Actually, the airport staff has already taken on that job of updating that pilot guide. Some of the procedures, some of the landmarks that were used by some of the pilots have changed, so they've updated that, used some more modern language and things like that to update it, make sure that the frequencies and the phone numbers and everything are correct. So that's been done and updated and is being circulated right now for review by a lot of the pilots groups and the tower and everything. They want to continue coordinating with FAA on approach procedures. The bayside approach was a really big effort by the airport staff to try and encourage airplanes to fly more over the bay on approach. They were successful in getting testing and things like that. That was a really important procedure when Surfair was up and flying at the airport. Again, this is something that staff will continue to work with as issues continue to arise. They also are really big in working with the pilots groups and students to discuss noise abatement and flying quietly and being friendly when they come and go from the airport and do their training. And then another thing that I think is really important is also real estate outreach programs. California has a very robust law in real estate in notifying folks when you're in an airport influence area. That's an important part of buying homes in California, and it's something that really does need to be encouraged for realtors to make sure that they notify that they're in an airport influence area. So that is something that is a good local measure. And finally, we have a measure for airport to continue their public events, to allow public to come out onto the airport and to be a part of that, learn a little bit about airport operations and things like that. So it's a good outreach effort that the airport does. And the revised noise abatement procedures, again, that pilot guide is already in the works, so hopefully that'll be out here soon. And most of that money for the local recommendations or for the creation and publication of the pilot's guide. So with that, just a little reminder that the public hearing is on Wednesday, Wednesday evening. Again, the workshop from 6:00 to 6:30, and the public hearing from 6:30 to 7:30. And most of the study, actually, all the study materials are on that website, sancarlosnoise-airportstudy.com. And with that, if you have any other questions?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fitz. Questions? Mr. Olber?
Thank you, Cameron. Thank you, good presentation. I always like to be able to educate my constituents when they come to me with issues and complaints, whatever level of government they involve, as to, since the rules don't get, they don't come down on stone tablets from God, they actually are created by legislatures at some point. I presume that even, for example, something like what defines the actionable noise levels, those are FAA regulations, but they must be under some federal, they were created under some federal law, correct?
Yes.
So this is a federal jurisdiction thing, and so if people have complaints with the system or whatnot, then they... the system or whatnot, then they should take it up with our congressional representatives.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you again for the presentation. I really only have one question. It's only because I got an email over the weekend from one of my constituents that said, have you heard anything about expanding the airport? I have not heard anything about that. I have no idea where that came from. Is there any plans to expand the airport?
Well, I, that wasn't part of my effort, but the airport has 2,600 feet of runway. It will continue to have 2,600 feet of runway, and it will never have any more than 2,600 feet of runway, which is rather short. There, they are replacing some tie-downs with some hangars, because aircraft are rather expensive, but there will be, that won't increase the number of positions that can park aircraft.
She didn't explain what she meant by expansion. So whether it's a runway, or, or buildings, or plane, you know, flight capacity, she didn't. So, I'd ask.
Am I missing anything, or was that?
We are doing construction, because we're having, like Dave said, aircraft coming in. But it doesn't, can you hear me?
Line up.
Yeah, I've gotten this question several times recently. I think it's a fair question, because we're doing construction on the airport, but like Dave said, we're replacing 14 outdoor parking spaces with 14 indoor parking spaces. So it won't increase capacity at the airport. We also are planning to renovate some existing buildings at the airport, which will improve how the airport looks from the freeway, which I'm sure everyone will appreciate. And we have some old buildings that have been empty for quite some time. So we plan on renovating those for existing businesses, but not expanding. So, no.
Okay. All right. It's good to know. I can get back to her with something now. Thank you.
Mr. Gerkot?
I think maybe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I seem to remember at one time, the airport was talking about improving the safety zone of the runway. And that might be what this person might have been thinking about, is hearing about improving the surface of the portion of the runway that's for sa, for safety for overrun.
Yeah, I believe that there were some, the overruns were, were cleaned up, but that was, that was done several years ago, I believe. So there's, there hasn't been any additional projects towards that end.
Okay. Thank you very much. My appreciation for the presentation. I also just wanted to recognize Ms. Kelly. I had an opportunity to take a tour of the airport a couple of years ago, and I, when we talked about noise, I was very appreciative of the response that you, you know, take all the complaints seriously, that you work with the pilots and the regular aviation education programs to, to address them. And so, on behalf of the community, that's very much appreciated.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, our Vice Mayor, sorry. But you look like the mayor right now.
Either way.
Just so the community knows, I was reminded of this just the other day. Somebody had told me that they had breakfast at the airport. There is a nice little restaurant there. You can get breakfast, I think lunch. I don't know if it's open for dinner or not, but it's, it's not a bad meal.
That's right. I take my kids there often.
Yeah.
Okay. We're going to move on to item 4C, which is a look into the future with the run-through of digital voting procedures in the council chambers with our city clerk, Crystal Mu.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. Crystal Mu, you're city clerk. With a light action agenda tonight, we thought this is a good opportunity to have a run-through of our digital voting. I know it's been a little while since you've had a, a look at this module, so I'm going to take a few minutes here to run through that and provide some screenshots. Okay. So when you're ready to make a motion on an item and to vote, you'll want to toggle over to your personal monitor. So that little button that you see circled there will take you to that personal monitor. If you'd like to make a motion, you can express that verbally as you do now, and then tap on mover on the screen there.
I actually don't see mover on the screen in front of me.
Oh, I think you're probably on the, if you toggle over to watch the presentation, you'll see that.
Oh, yeah, on the presentation, I see that. I mean...
You'll want to follow along with the presentation while I'm going through that first. Okay. So once you make a motion, then the system's going to want to have someone second it. So that'll be what you see there. So the seconder would express that verbally, and then tap on that button. And then, once those motions and seconds are made, you'll see this screen with the voting options. So after council has a chance to discuss the item, and the mayor is ready to, to have a vote, he'll let you know. And at that point, you can go ahead and tap yes, no, or abstain. If you made the motion or second, you're going to automatically be defaulted as a yes vote, but you can always change that as long as the vote hasn't ended yet. And then, once all the votes are cast, I'll display the results, which will look like this, and then I'll read out the results. When I last presented this digital voting module to you, there was some concern expressed about how the screen would reflect any amendments that are made to an item. We explored a few ways, but the best and most efficient way would be to mark it so that, right here where you see adopted, it would show as adopted as amended, just to show that there was a change in the item as, as it was presented in this, in the packets. I would use this adopt as amended screen for any edits that you make to, say, the resolution or the ordinance. If, for the consent calendars, if you pull an item, I'll show that the consent calendar was adopted as amended, as well as if you want to vote yes for all the consent calendar items, but you want to place a no vote on one particular item, it will also show adopted as amended. So I hope that addresses your concern with that, and I hope this looks pretty clear to you. And if you have any questions about how to proceed with that, I'd be happy to address that.
That sounds good. So, so really, we're just getting a presentation tonight? When are we gonna?
So this is just kind of a run-through reminder of how you do it, and actually, for the action agenda items tonight, we'll go ahead and start that.
We will. Okay. Okay. Additional questions for Crystal? Mr. Olber?
Thank you. Yeah, Crystal, one thing in what you said that I'm just curious, is if this is a configuration option. I actually don't necessarily, I personally don't like the fact that if you're a mover or a seconder, that it defaults to you're voting yes on it, because there actually are situations where that's actually not correct. And I know you can change it, but, but simply having it default that way is a little bit, for lack of a better term, presumptuous by the software.
Right. Yeah. And the system does, there's no way to change that. I've, I've looked into that.
Okay. Well, I, I don't know how everybody else feels. I personally, I don't have an objection to using the software with that limitation in it, but I also wouldn't mind if staff got back to the, whoever develops the software and say they ought to fix that in their next release.
Okay. I'll put that as a note.
Okay. Any additional questions? All right. Thank you, Crystal. Hopefully, we get it right in a few minutes. Okay. We have a very impressive-looking group from the fire department this evening, who are here to present item 4D, a presentation on insurance services office class one fire protection rating, and our fire chief, Stan Moppen. Good evening.
Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Stan Moppen, you're fire chief. We want to start off by first saying thank you for allowing us to make this presentation to you this evening. We've, we've got a, an achievement that we've gotten that we've been waiting for years to get. And quite frankly, to be very honest with you, I, as my association with San Carlos started back in 2011 as your deputy chief, have been waiting a long time for this, for this rating to come in, and we're very, very proud of this. This evening, we're going to be talking about the fire protection rating for the city of San Carlos that was achieved through the insurance services offices rating on public protection classification. And as you can see on the screen, we've achieved a class one rating. And I'm going to have the representative from ISO speak here in a few moments. But the class one rating is only 329, I believe we're saying now, 329 fire departments across the country out of 46,000 evaluated are able to achieve a class one rating. Now, the class one rating is not just a, just an award that we can talk about, that we achieved. There is some direct benefit to the community. Again, one of the reasons that I've been waiting anxiously for this to happen over the years. The result of this, of this rating is not just done by the fire department. The, the combination of, of entities that are required to achieve this rating include community development, the water department, dispatch for the San Mateo County Fire Departments. All of these come, are factors that play into a class one rating for the protection of the city of San Carlos. We are the first fire department in this county of San Mateo to achieve a class one rating. And one of the things is that this is, having San Carlos benefit from this class one rating is a direct result of your council's support over the years of our partnership between the two cities. With that, I'd like to pass this over to Andy Bolton from the, from ISO. He's our senior field representative, and also the gentleman that did the rating of the fire department of both cities to achieve this rating. So I'll turn it over to him at this time. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good afternoon, guys. My name is Andy. I'm with ISO. We're the insurance services office, whatever you like to call us. We've been doing this for quite a while, and I understand that this partnership was created several, a few years ago, and it's really had some good benefits to the community. A little bit about ISO is, we've been doing this for over 50 years. We've been grading over 46,000 fire departments. The numbers fluctuated over the years, plus or minus, depending on a lot of consolidations or, or breakups, whatever you want to call it. But in this case, this was a benefit to the community, because you guys used to be a class three several years back. After this partnership was formed, now we have a class one rating, which is one of the best you can get. What we do is we create something called the Public Protection Classification Rating. This is given out to the insurance industry, so that way they can determine what the fire, fire suppression capabilities are of a community. The better the fire protection rating generally means to lower rates for your constituents, for property insurance. And that's a big deal. And so, like the chief said, this isn't really just about bragging rights, or having a nice plaque that says we're class one. It actually has a, an impact on the community. This will save dollars and cents in the end. We've been doing, oop, wrong slide there. So in the, we, what we use is a document called the Fire Suppression Rating Schedule. This is a guide that was created. We've, it's been, it's, it's been an evolving document over the years, and there's, it's constantly changing. But, so it's difficult for the fire departments to get to this level, and then to obtain, to, to maintain it. But ultimately, what we're doing is, we're looking at the fire department's capabilities on their first alarm assignment. Although there's 60-some-odd fire stations in the, available in the county, we're looking at just the immediate response, first alarm. We don't just use something that was just made up. The standards that we've been used are nationally accepted standards. We're using the American Waterworks Association for the water departments. We're looking at the National Fire Protection Agency Association for the fire department, APCO, and, and also NFPA for the dispatch center. Like the chief said, this is a big deal for the entire community, and a lot of people are involved in this, not just you, but even the private organization CalWater is available, on board with this as well. Anything over 90 points is a class one. And class one is the best rating that you can get, and a class 10 is the worst. But as for class one, like the chief said, there's only 300-and-some-on, 330 of, of you guys available in the, in the country out of 46,000. If we look at the, if we actually look at the entire rating, it's, it says here 329. We can add that up to 330 now if we like, because city of San Carlos and Redwood City have now obtained that. This is countrywide, so of the 45,000 fire departments-ish, this is what it looks like. The average is typically fours, fives, and sixes. In California, we're a little bit more of a progressive state, so we tend to have threes, fours, and fives as more of a commonplace. But even then, in the class, in the class one territory, there's only 33 fire departments in California right now. So that's still less than 3% of California, less than 1% of the entire nation's fire services are able to keep up with this standard. It's a huge achievement. It's absolutely commendable, and I think it's a testament to the amount of work that was all put in by the community, by the community. And what do I do to the button here? Oh, there it goes. The items, what we evaluated, so we've talked about this already, that it's a community grading. It's not exactly just the fire department, but we start out from the dispatch center, from the communication center, right from the point of 911 contact. That communication center, we, we look at, it's, it's a 10% of the grade. We look at how quickly the call came in, and how quickly it was dispatched. Additionally, we look at, when we go a step further, we want to know not just, are the fire department's staff trained, but we want to know where the fire department's stations are located. Obviously, we want fire stations located closest to the call available, so you want to have a good dispersion of where your fire stations are. And in this case, they are. They're very good between the two cities. The fire department, we're also looking at the train capabilities, the, the pump testing, the hose testing. We're looking at personnel, staffing levels, how often they train. It's, there's a lot of detail that go into it. We spent several hours going over this. And then, of course, not to be ever forgotten, is the water department. A lot of people don't think about it, but the, without a, well, a good water department, the fire department can't do very well. But the water department is 40% of the grade, and they were able to obtain, I believe, just over 30, 37 or 38 points out of 40. So they did really well as well. And then, of course, the last thing we look at is the building, like the chief said, the building development or community risk reduction. We're looking at fire prevention, public education, fire investigation. We look at how, how well the building officials can work together with the fire department to make sure we can credit fires that never actually start. Years ago, they decided that was kind of important. If the, the more fires that we can reduce saves a lot of money to the insurance companies, and then in turn, they can save that money to the constituents. I don't want to spend too much time going over each one of these items. It's in the report. I see you guys all looking at it. This, these are where the points all lined up on kind of a light item score there. The communication center out of San Mateo, I think regional 911, is nine points out of 10. The fire department overall got 41 points out of 50. The water department was able to obtain 38 and a half points out of 40. And then, the community risk reduction, like I said, this is something that I, I do want to spend some time talking about. Prior to 2013, this credit wasn't available to any agency in the country. Since the availability of this, we've been able to more accurately predict fire loss, because there's a lot less fire loss in California than there is in a lot of other countries, or, pardon me, a lot of other countries too, but a lot of other states, I should say. In California, we have some of the more stricter state building and fire codes, but because of that, it's really shown to reduce the fire, and, and that really made a big difference and a big impact on the city of Redwood City and the city of San Carlos. But with that, that kind of wraps up the presentation for right now. This is going to be effective in November 1st. So this is, November 1st, when that comes along, that's going to be the time that you're going to want to reach out and do a PSA, social media blast, let the community know that at that time, November 1st, is when they want to reach out to their insurance companies and see if they're eligible for a lower rate. So like I said, if there's nothing you got out of this presentation, if anything, you should at least know that, generally speaking, this is good for the community, and is good for dollars and cents, and it's really good for the fire department and everyone else that was involved in this. So congratulations to you all. But do you have any questions at this point?
Well, I, first of all, I think it's worthy of a round of applause. So congratulations.
Thank you.
And it's testament to excellent job and a lot of hard work. I see my colleague, Mr. Olber, has a question.
Thank you, Cameron. Great presentation. Great job, everybody. Just a couple of quick questions. Did you say in the presentation that San Carlos used to be class three?
Yeah, they were. So prior, prior to 2013, we used to come around every 10 years. Now, we're on a five-year cycle. During the 2013 change, we hadn't come back out since you guys, I believe, were actually part of Belmont at the time, and they were a class three. Actually, most of the county was either a class three or a class two. A lot, but since, I would say, in the last 10 years, there's been a lot of improvements, not just with the city of San Carlos or Redwood City, just county-wide entirely. But yes, you guys were a class three, and now you guys are a class one. So that's a big step for the city of San Carlos.
Okay. Thank you. And this next question may be a, a stand question, but just in general, going forward, what's your sense of what it takes to maintain this rating?
Certainly, keeping services as they are. Status quo is obviously always critical to this type of thing. But as we continue to evaluate things like our response times, the, the things that we monitor constantly, whether it's staffing, response times, and I'm just drawing a blank on the one stat that I want to throw out there. But in addition to the fire department, though, the infrastructure upkeep is going to be critical also. Obviously, as, as we know, as the infrastructure in many cities are starting to age, we've been blessed that CalWater's done such a fine job in keeping us at this rating. But it's, it's the things that keep, keep both the fire department and the water system at least status quo, if not accelerating moving forward in their capabilities and, and doing those kind of things. And we're seeing that as we, as we buy new equipment. We're keeping our staffing levels where they are right now. But we're seeing that, that investment come forward in this kind of award, so.
Good. Thank you. You know, I, I will just say, I think you guys continue to do a phenomenal job. It was, you know, a painful thing to, in a way, to, to bounce around from the old Belmont-San Carlos fire situation. My instinct tells me that we probably would not be in this position here tonight if we were not with Redwood City, which is not a criticism of any of the prior organizations. But you guys were a top-notch outfit. And as I always tell people when the subject comes up, it never hurts to marry up.
Well, thank you very much. And that's our commitment to San Carlos, you know, as, as partners with Redwood City. We've, you know, we've worked really hard to make sure that we're providing the service levels that are, that are desired, if not more than that.
Mr. Gerkot? Mr. Gerkott.
Two-part question. We, as you mentioned, we used to be partners with Belmont. I'm just curious what their rating is now that they are on their own with their fire department, if you know. And then, the thing I feel cautionary about is it's great to get the award, but not to have a false sense of security. So I'm curious, the city of Santa Rosa, what is their rating, or what was it before they had the catastrophic fire?
So unfortunately, we can't discuss that legally. This is, in these settings, obviously, this is going to go public, but it's a public on request, and Class 1s are treated a little differently. But anybody, any other agency that's not a Class 1, it's proprietary information. Most of these agencies will announce it, you can see with a simple phone call most of the time. But I can say that they went through a consolidation, so each of their cities individually were graded, and then we had to come back and possibly put them all together again. So it's kind of, it's actually a moving target with the other local agencies. As for Santa Rosa, a lot of that has to do with wild land, or the incident, I'm assuming you're referring to that. This is looking at, this particular grading, what we're doing, this is a structured fire grading. We're looking at first alarm response to structured fires and commercial alarms, so business owners and residential owners. There is a product out there called FireLine that is looking at satellite imagery. In Santa Rosa, it was known to be in a high-threat area, but their ISO public protection classification is separate from the FireLine rating that they did. So they did have an excellent fire department. However, unfortunately, just because of the region, that threat is a very, I guess, specific threat to that region. So, you know, not that it's unfair to include their ISO PPC score, but it's just something to recognize that there's several different layers to this. Whenever someone gets an insurance quote, there's probably about 20 different variables, and there's public protection classification, which carries probably the most weight. But under that, they have other things like flood or wind hazards. They also have a rating done for FireLine, which is the satellite imagery, and we look at the slope and terrain and all that. So specifically in Santa Rosa, there's a lot of other variables, but their fire department is an excellent fire department. I can say that.
So just to make sure I understood what your answer was, in regard to San Carlos, we have wild land around us too. So if we did have a fire, let's say up in, you know, on the western edge of town and where there's parkland and so forth, if we had a fire there, it wouldn't affect our fire rating, this rating that we're talking about, as long as it didn't impact structures? Or could it?
So if you had a fire along the western area, or what we refer to actually as the WUI, the Wild and Urban Interface, those areas, any property that is on that, the FireLine score that I was discussing, that is actually property-specific compared to this rating here is a Class 1. This is a community grade. This is a blanket rating for the entire community. And so when we look at any properties that are along that slope on the western edge there, those properties specifically might have a different, let's say it's a 1,500-square-foot home right in the WUI or the Wild and Urban Interface versus in the flatland area. They might be the same characteristics of building, but they might have two different rates from the same company, just because the FireLine score may be different. So yes, but either way, the PPC score carries a lot of weight, and most areas should see a reduction in the rates regardless, especially from the Class 3 to a Class 1. That's a much bigger jump than just one class at a time. Going down two classes should be very impactful to the community here in San Carlos.
Thank you.
Okay. I just want to share my congratulations again. You know, our fire department has taken many twists and turns over the last decade. I hope that this is particularly gratifying to you, Stan, to our city manager. A lot of difficult decisions were made, and there was a lot of difficult conversations along the way, but I think the results speak for themselves. And I know that the community will sleep soundly, knowing that they're, you know, protected by one of the best fire departments in the United States of America. And so I'm very thankful for all the hard work. So thank you.
Thank you very much, and I just want to make a quick comment also, that while we're all kind of dressed up in our fancy, you know, Sunday-go-to-church uniforms and sitting back here, you see a very robust command staff as far as the capabilities and their years of experience, and that has played a big part in leading a very honorable group of men and women in the fire department also to make sure that this rating is kept. So thank you very much.
Well done. All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. We will move on to Item 5, Public Comment. This is for persons wishing to address the city council on matters that are not on the posted agenda. This evening, I have one speaker card, and that is from Christian Vesia. Good evening, sir. If you could keep your comments to a couple of minutes, that would be much appreciated.
Okay. Good evening, council members. My name is Christian Vesia. I'm here tonight as a private resident and co-founder of Good Growth San Carlos, which is a residence-based organization concerned with the impact of oversized homes on San Carlos residents and our neighborhoods. I also served on the city's Single Family Home Advisory Committee for nine months, also known as the Shaq. The group, GGSC, that I'm with, has been working on this issue for over two years, and we've attended every one of the 10 city council and planning commission meetings held on this subject. We have over 250 residents who look to us for information and representation of their views. Our subscribers include builders and architects. As you know, the planning commission voted 4 to 1 to approve a set of amendments to the city's residential zoning standards, which they have sent to you to decide on in October. Many residents are disappointed by that vote for a couple of reasons. First, we feel the decision on a set of complex standards was not well-considered. The FAR-based approach was introduced for the first time about less than two weeks before the final vote. The recommendation that was selected was not among the nine options presented in the agenda packet, and after a lot of back and forth, the final vote was cast at 12:10 a.m. In short, it was rushed. Second, we feel that the final outcome does not reflect the input received over months and years from really what has been an overwhelming majority of San Carlos residents. At the public hearing that I was at, 20 of 24 people stood up and spoke and endorsed Good Growth positions. One made a comment that was irrelevant about basements, and of the remaining three, it was only on the aspect of appropriate FAR at the lowest end that they differed. So I would also say that many of us also have been disappointed by the process. We had an advisory committee. It was meant to include no more than three people with connections with building and real estate, a minority of participants. We ended up with a 5 to 2 supermajority of people with some professional connection with real estate, building, architecture. Shaq only considered, over the nine months that it met, a single approach from the start, so that didn't seem particularly open. Local architects were not really given a serious opportunity to comment, and probably had it not been that they stood up and said, now that you've told us something about this, do you want to know what we think about it? And the city staff, in making its own recommendation, used what I think any reasonable person would consider inappropriate math to justify the standard that they recommended, which was 59%, based on a number that included San Carlos. So we're comparing ourselves against ourselves by including in the number. So it leaves us feeling like the outreach process was not a sincere effort to gather input, but only window dressing. So over the week, and I had a chance to talk with Mark Olbert, we discussed the idea that the council might benefit from more open and interactive dialogue with key groups involved in this decision. So my purpose here tonight is to say we strongly believe the council would benefit from more information to help you understand this complex issue and the options you'll be voting on very soon. To be effective and representative, we think such a conversation needs to have the right groups, not just sitting city staff involved. And in our view, the right groups mean San Carlos residents. We also, and with regards to Shaq, I would say--
I'd hate to cut you off. You're running a little over time, so if you could just wrap it up.
I'd just say we strongly believe that residents need to be represented. We recommend you avail yourself of an independent architect who can answer technical questions, something the planning commission did not have at their disposal. And so we think Good Growth San Carlos can fairly represent the viewpoint of a large portion of residents. We're open to other approaches to getting resident representation for the process. So we think for the process to be representative and really credible, that residents' voices need to be heard. So this has been a long road. We think we've brought a really valuable input, and we hope you will avail yourself an opportunity to dig into this a little bit more. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. I have no other speaker cards. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on an item tonight that is not on the posted agenda? If not, we'll move on to Item 6, the Consent Calendar. Consent items will be enacted by a single motion. Any member of the public or a member of the dais can request to remove an item. Is there anyone wishing to remove an item tonight? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Crystal, please call the roll.
We're going to vote.
Oh, we're going to vote. So what would be the proper thing to say at this point? Just, gentlemen, please vote. It's going quite well.
So, Crystal, how do I vote?
You have already cast your vote.
Oh, so in other words, if you're the mover, it not only defaults to-- sorry. If you're the mover, it not only defaults to saying you're going to vote on it, instead of saying yes, it says mover.
It says mover, and then the yes right now should have a little star on it?
It doesn't. It says mover with a little star on it. That's okay. All right, thank you.
And, sorry, if you second the motion, it looks like it defaults to you voting yes as well.
Yes.
Interesting.
You're able to tap no or abstain at this point if you won.
Whoever wrote this software needs to take a civics class.
Specifically, they don't know very much about drills, but yes.
The consent calendar has been adopted.
Thank you, Crystal. So is that the procedure, then, that the city clerk would report the vote?
Right.
Okay, excellent. Okay. It worked.
Excellent.
All right, we'll move on to our study session tonight. Item 7A, Discuss Updates to the Elected Official Salary and Benefit Resolution. The city attorney, as we get into this tonight, the city attorney asked me to say to my colleagues that the purpose of this study session is to discuss whether or not we want to put something on a future agenda, not necessarily to talk about specific ideas about what any changes to the salary might be, but we can talk about it in general terms. And with that, I will--
Mr. Mayor, may I ask just a clarification? Are you, for example, or is our attorney's advice that, like, he doesn't want us saying, "I think it should be changed to $673.42"?
Precisely. And the exact amount, I don't want a consensus to be, in essence, voted on tonight on the amount, but we've provided you with a lot of information about what the options you have are under the report.
Okay.
All right. Good evening, Ms. Mendenhall.
Good evening. Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. Tonight, for your study session, we're going to talk about the existing Elected Official Salary and Benefit Resolution. So a little background, in 1988, council adopted ordinance number 996, setting the city council and the city treasurer's salary at $300 per month. More recently, in 2014, council adopted 2014-117 to have any alternate medical benefits deposited into a 457B account in lieu of cash payment. This followed a ruling by the Attorney General that found if the payment was made in cash, it would require an ordinance update, as it would be considered a salary payment. The resolution in 2014 also removed the requirement that a council member retire from CalPERS, since council members have two choices for retirement plans. They have either the CalPERS plan or a VALOC 457 plan. CalPERS membership is optional for elected officials. So during the budget study sessions in April 2018, council requested a review of the monthly salary as it compares to other agencies. Again, the last increase was effective November 19, 1989, when the monthly salary was increased from $200 to $300 per month. Government Code 36516.5 allows for an increase in an amount not to increase 5% per year. Since there have not been any increases for 29 years, this would amount to 145% increase, or an increase from $300 to $735 per month. Salary increases can only take effect when at least one member begins a new term, and any changes would require an ordinance amendment. So this chart shows the monthly salaries for other agencies in San Mateo County. As you can see, San Carlos is the lowest on the list. Note that Atherton and Woodside do not offer their council wages or benefits, and Hillsborough offers benefits in lieu of salary. So excluding those three cities, the total average is $567.33 per month, and the total median is $590 per month. So this is a study session, so it's up to the council to determine if you want to bring this item back for action. If changes to the salary benefits are to be considered, especially the salary portion, we would need to agendize the consideration of amending an ordinance at the next council meeting for action. This would give time to allow for a second reading of the ordinance and subsequent adoption before the next council takes office. So with that, I can answer any questions you might have.
Thank you for the presentation. Questions, Ms. Olbert.
Thank you, Cameron. Thank you, Rebecca. Just a few basic questions. So on one of the slides, since we haven't done any increases in 29 years, the implication is that we could do 29 years of 5% increases. I just wanted to confirm that the law actually allows that kind of cumulative look back?
Turn that over to Greg.
Yes, it does. It's 5% for each year since the last adjustment, is the way the law reads.
Strange, but okay.
But it's not compounded. It's just, it's 5% per year.
Okay, thank you. And actually, Greg, this may be, as long as you're answering, this may be a Greg question here. So I noticed that Atherton and Woodside don't provide wages or benefits, and Hillsborough offers benefits in lieu of salaries. So I guess I had misunderstood. I thought state law required that council members be offered to be paid at least $300, so it's not a requirement. It's an option.
It's not a requirement. It's an enabling statute, it's a limiting statute, essentially, so--
So I don't want to talk about specific numbers per your advice, but hypothetically, then we actually could say we just don't want to pay ourselves.
I have to look at the statute, but I can get back to you in a second. Let me just look at the exact statute.
Fair enough, because I actually have a Rebecca question. And that is, I appreciate the chart that laid out what the monthly salaries were by city. Do you have any sense of how similar the benefit offerings are? Because I guess basically, we provide, if you meet certain conditions, a council member can subscribe to, can join the city health plan, basically, which is a substantial benefit in lieu of having to purchase insurance personally, as Ron knows. Do we know how we compare? Like, is that pretty common amongst most of the other communities as well?
From the agencies that we've looked at, we haven't had the opportunity to look at every agency here, but a few of them, it does, they do have similar benefits to us.
Okay. Of the ones that you had a chance to look at from that dimension, are there any that don't provide access to the health benefits?
We're still in the process of doing the research, so I'd have to get back to you on that.
Okay. I just meant in terms of ones you actually knew the research results on.
The ones that we did the research on, they do, except for Atherton, Woodside.
Yeah. Okay. I think that was, that was all my questions. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Gerkott.
One of the other items that we have to deal with as council members is if we travel for meetings, which mostly are local, that we have to turn in a sheet and ask for mileage and so forth. Do any of the cities provide just a straight-up car allowance like we do for our, you know, we provide that for, I don't know, beyond the city manager, but it seems to me that we provide that for some of the administrative staff. Is that not right?
We do provide it for some of the management staff. The cities, so we did send out an email survey to the cities in the San Mateo area, and none of the cities that responded said they offer a car allowance. They do do mileage reimbursement, just as we do.
So it was asked?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay, all right.
All right, Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you, Rebecca, can you talk a little bit about the alternate medical benefits that it says here to be deposited directly into 457B account? Does that mean that if a council member said, "I'm gonna get my own benefits," and the city would provide, say, $1,000 a month? Does that $1,000 a month go into a separate account?
It would go into their 457 plan.
That they would, that they have, that they would...
Yeah. If they're eligible for the medical benefits, so if they're enrolled in CalPERS or in the other 457 plan, they can, and they have health insurance covered by a spouse or significant or, or a spouse, basically, then they would qualify for the alt-medical benefit, which would then be deposited directly into the 457 account.
Okay. And does that...
We made that change in 2014 based on a, a ruling.
Does that vary based on the council, on a particular council member, if they're married or single, or?
No, it's just a flat rate.
Flat, it's a flat number. Okay. Do you know what that number is?
It's, for the coming year, for 2019, it will be $863 a month.
Any additional questions for staff? Ms. Olbert?
Yes, thank you, Cameron. Just actually, a follow-up to the question. Ron was asking Rebecca, or maybe Jeff, since this goes a bit into ancient history. Can somebody explain to me what the rationale was that was offered for the alternative medical benefit compensation? In other words, I understand, you know, some of the other things were choices, like how much we get paid and whether we charge people for, for being, being able to participate in the health insurance program, but it's, I'm having a little difficulty understanding why, if somebody already has medical insurance and they sort of proved to us that they have medical insurance, we say, "Well, here's a check for $800."
Are you asking the question specifically to the council or just in general?
I suppose it could be answered either way. I'm just really trying to understand sort of what the, what the goal, maybe, put it this way, what's the goal of providing that payment?
I think the, the goal is to get them to not take our medical insurance, which is more expensive than the alt-medical benefit. In other words, just because your spouse has medical insurance, if we also offer you medical insurance, you could take our medical insurance, too.
And it would, oh, all right. That makes sense.
And it would cost us more than the alt-medical benefit.
Okay. That makes sense. Basically, it's in the, it's in the city's interest for you to have your own insurance, because otherwise, otherwise you're only, any one individual only contributes a small portion of the actual total cost of the insurance policy. Got it. Thank you.
Mr. Gerkopf.
And just, if I may, a note on that is to Mark's question. Even if your spouse or partner has health insurance and you can sign up for it, you can still sign up for the cities and be in second position. So if you have a procedure done, you know, your main insurance can cover that, and then what that doesn't cover, the second policy can cover. And what Jeff is saying, what the city manager is saying, is to not take that saves the city money. So, and I also think, just from my perspective, being on the council for as long as I have, the history on it was, there was a policy in place, for instance, when I got on the council, that if you didn't take your health insurance, you got paid the cash equivalent for a single person. So it didn't matter if you're married or, or not. It was just the amount for a single person. And then the law was changed, state of California, that disallowed that payment, as Rebecca referred to. So I think there was some feeling on the council at the time, because the council members at the time were getting that benefit, if you will. To have it taken away by the state felt like, you know, you're unfair, if you will, at the time. So that, that's a little bit of a history on it. Right or wrong, that's what happened. I have one other question. You've put on here the cities. Some of the positions that council members serve on, the boards also pay a council member? When you, when we, if we bring this to the council for consideration as an action item, can you provide some information on that so that we're fully aware of where council members potentially are getting paid?
We can look into that, yes.
You know what I'm talking about. There's some, certain boards that we may serve on that might pay a small stipend.
A small stipend, yeah. We can look into that.
Okay. Thank you.
I have the answer to Councilmember Olbert's question about the ordinance. The city is not required to adopt an ordinance. The operative word is "may," so you can adopt an ordinance that did not provide for, for salary, for example, but if you do, you have to set it at the specified amounts.
Thank you, Mr. Rubens.
Any further questions? So, gentlemen, what is your pleasure? I think the proposal is, do we want to bring back a resolution amending the salary and benefit ordinance? Would anyone care to speak? Mr. Collins?
Yes. I would like to bring it back. There are a number of reasons that I think that we ought to consider this, you know, that hasn't been changed in 29 years. I think that potentially, we maybe discourage people from serving, because they all, a lot of people have jobs, and when they take, I know that when I take time away from my job to do this, I do this job, obviously, because I love it, and the compensation doesn't nearly reimburse me for the time that I, that I spend. And I think that, you know, most of us spend probably up to 30 hours a month. It's not just two meetings a month. And I would point out, though, I believe, what was it, Woodside and Hillsborough meet once a month, or Atherton and Hillsborough meet once a month. So it, it makes sense that there would have, you know, a little bit, little or no compensation. So I think when you have people that are spending up to 30 hours a month, we could have council members in the future that, or potential candidates for council in the future, that may be a deal breaker, because they may forego sitting on a committee that they might be good at, or an organization that, that they might otherwise be interested in, because they might be thinking about the compensation. So I, I don't, I don't think it's, you know, it's a lot to consider a small increase, and I think, I really do think that we ought to agendize it.
Okay. Mr. Olbert?
I do also.
Okay. Mr. Olbert?
I'm not gonna lose any sleep if this gets brought back for action, and, you know, I'll vote however I think is appropriate on it. I will say, just in response to what Ron was saying, I understand the arguments, Ron, but until, I think it was 2009, 2010, the San Carlos School Board didn't even allow the trustees to participate in the district's healthcare plan. As I recall, or maybe it was 2011, I think it was when I was leaving the board, as I recall, the changes that they made allowed them to participate, but they had to pay the entire cost of the service, the insurance policy, if you will. And they've never had problems getting people to run, with one exception. There was one person about two decades ago who dropped out when he found out that the trustee positions were not paid. And, you know, the practical reality is that unless, unless we're gonna, well, we, the maximum we can raise it to, given the 5% increase cap per year, it's not really going to make any kind of substantive difference, I would argue, in, in somebody's analysis about whether or not they're gonna run for the council, in my opinion. So in a sense, one way or another, it's a purely optical thing at this point, in my opinion. And, you know, if it gets brought back, like I said, I look forward to the discussion. Personally, as I've mentioned a few years ago, back, I think it was 2014, when we had this issue up, I actually have always felt that the potential for the significant health benefits being provided really outstrip what is available to people who work part-time for the city and, and put in probably as many hours as we do. And, you know, so I may, if it gets brought back, propose that we adopt a model kind of like what the school board does, where you can enroll into the city's plan, but you have to pay the full, full cost of it, not just the employee contribution, assuming that's possible. But anyway, I don't mind if it gets brought back, but to me, it's like more optics than anything else.
So I'll add my name as someone to bring it back. I tend to agree with Mark. I guess I would maybe change the word optics to symbolism. I don't think it's particularly, I did some rough calculation. I think our total salaries are four one-hundredths of 1% of the city budget, so even if you were to double it, it wouldn't be material to the city.
Less than that.
Oh, is it less than that? And then, as I agree with Mark, that I don't think, for most people, it would have a big impact on the decision to run for council. I do think it's a, really a question of symbolism about accountability and how, how much we value public service. And I, and, and so on both of those sides, I would say that if, as a council member, you're compensated a little bit more by the taxpayers, you may feel a little bit more accountable, and may work a bit harder, and if you, it just sends a message to the population and the community that we take it seriously and that we're willing to pay for it. So that's why I think it's, I think it's worth having a discussion about it, so. I take it Seth has sufficient direction?
I think we do. I was just gonna point out that our city treasurer, Mike Galvin, is here, and he's also affected by any changes that, that might be made, just in case Mike wanted to add to the discussion.
Mr. Galvin, would you care?
Sorry, I didn't mean to single out.
Do you have a point of view on this that you'd like to share?
I think it is ripe to reconsider. Like you said, it's been 28, 29 years since the last increase. My budget is substantially smaller than your budget, it's about $1,500 a year, so I end up using out-of-pocket costs, but I have no problem doing that, and whatever the council so decides, I feel comfortable with it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item tonight? If not, I believe we will now move on to new business. Item 8A, consideration of adopting a resolution agreeing to share the cost for school crossing guards with the San Carlos School District for fiscal year 2018, 2019. Good evening, Steve.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor, City Council Members, Stephen Machida, Public Works Director. So I actually have the pleasure to actually present the crossing guard program to the city council this evening. So just a little bit of history. Okay. Since 2014, the city has contributed to the funding of the crossing, crossing guard program. The school district, however, administers the program and selects the contractor. City is really not involved in any of the operation of the program, but just contributes to cover the costs of the program itself. So as shown in the slide, we, the program actually covers seven intersections within the city. So Woodland Royal, Britton Cedar, Oriole Cedar, Bayview Club, Dartmouth-San Carlos, Dartmouth-Wellington, and then Dartmouth-Tierra-Linda. So here's kind of a overall view of the seven intersections, and then the one amended location, which would be the Dartmouth-Tierra-Linda. So just a little bit closer, as you can see, here are the seven intersections shown that I have previously described. So the cost of the program for fiscal year 2018, 19 is $112,404.78, which the city share would be 50% of that cost, or $56,202.39. An additional intersection of Dartmouth-Tierra-Linda was actually added to the program for $8,321.87. This was really as a result of some of the work that the city had done to actually, to install ADA curb ramps across the driveway, if you will. And so in prior years, this driveway was actually considered not in the public rideways, but since we actually added those ADA ramps and we had to stripe the crosswalk, it would really kind of force the crosswalks where the children to cross more into the street. And so in this year, we had elected to say that this, this intersection is actually, or the city should pay our, our 50% cost of the, of the program itself. So the cross, excuse me, so the crossing guards, you know, the district has, has the city to actually share in the cost of the crossing guard at this location. The crossing guards at this location really assist in the flow of the traffic with the students, and this really kind of prevents a better flow of traffic. Basically, the crossing guard is able to, if you will, bunch the students such that it holds the students at the curb, allowing some of the traffic to go through in and out of the school, and then allows the students to cross the street safely. The program support is, the program supports the council's strategic objective in that it fosters a safer community and safeguards the students. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Ms. Olbert?
Thank you, Cameron. Thank you, Stephen. When I was reading the staff materials, I tend to think of these programs mostly from sort of a safety point of view, which of course is their primary purpose, but there was a phrase in there about how it aids traffic flow by bunching pedestrians. And I was like, "Oh, yeah, of course. That's actually really true." So my question is, are there other places in San Carlos where during going to and from school, there are places where there are not crossing, crossing guards currently, where putting crossing guards would have a significant effect, because it would bunch things up and make traffic flow better? Because we all keep getting more and more complaints, as I'm sure you do, too, about traffic not flowing in San Carlos during rush hour, so...
Well, there's probably numerous intersections that, you know, I'm, I'm kind of aware of where there are no crossing guards, however, children or pedestrians, for that matter, they cross when obviously it tends to be safe. However, when you have a continuous stream of students or pedestrians who cross, that really kind of slows down the, the traffic. So to answer your question, are there other intersections? Certainly. I think, you know, one of the things in public works we're looking at is kind of the safe routes to school, kind of identify those areas, and then kind of working with the school district and source, providing, you know, clear directions as far as the pathways to get the children from school to home and home to school.
Well, let me just point, suggest here, see if anybody else in the dais is, is interested. I wouldn't mind, and maybe this is something for the next, next budget cycle or the next midterm budget cycle update, I certainly wouldn't object to staff going out and trying to assess that type of opportunity, and if there are ways that we can, by putting a crossing guard in place and spending a few money, you know, a little bit of money for a few hours a day, have a significant impact on traffic flows, I know I would like to do that, or at least like to hear about it, see how expensive it is. Anybody else?
I don't have any opposition to that. I like crossing guards. Okay. That makes three. Mr. Gerkopf?
Maybe I'm not looking at the map correctly, but is there not a crossing guard at, I think it would be Cordillares and, I'm trying to think what street...
Bell.
Bell, yeah. Seems like I've been there before.
I can speak to that having, I sometimes volunteer as a crossing guard there. It's, it's a, it's a volunteer, parent-organized crossing guards.
So is there any reason we're, we're not funding that one, or having that in the program?
These are the seven intersections that the school district has asked us, the city, to pay for. As I mentioned earlier, this is their program, so they have identified those intersections they feel that are most important or require the crossing guards within the program itself.
So how would they feel if we, I mean, we can discuss this later when we, before we take action on this item, but I'm sitting here thinking, okay, if we're gonna pay half of the cost of the program, we should be more involved. It shouldn't just be them choosing the contractor, it shouldn't just be them deciding what intersections, et cetera, et cetera. If we're gonna pay half the cost, we should be at the table, and we're not. Now, maybe this gets discussed in two plus two, and I'm sure it does, but still, my feeling, I'm happy to support the program. I think it is, you know, it's a public safety issue, so it's not just a school issue, and I do think it also has an impact on traffic in the morning, and in fact, I would think it has a positive impact. We have a lot of streets where people live and complain about cars speeding and, you know, people trying to get to work and not being considerate. And, you know, one solution is, okay, let's have crossing guards there, let's have routes to school on those streets, and that would slow down traffic. I mean, that's, that's an approach, and that would be something the city would think of that the school not necessarily would think of. That's why I would like to see us at the table if we're gonna be spending half the money. Was there any discussion about that?
I do not believe so, but certainly I would be more than willing to sit down with it. the school district to have these type of discussions, as far as identifying those intersections. But I believe these seven intersections that have been identified, that had been discussed with staff, as well as, you know, these were the recommended intersections that they wanted to have the guards at.
Mr. City Attorney, if we wanted to send a message, I don't think we can change the action item tonight, but if we wanted to send a message to the school district that if we're going to fund half the program, we want to be more involved, how might we do that?
Well, I think you could direct staff to communicate that to the district when the next time this comes forward to you as a budget item. You could, I think I'm hesitant to change the program necessarily in the resolution you're considering tonight, because it's, this is basically a cost share, and adding a crosswalk is the item you're considering.
Matt, if I might offer, having sat on the two plus two, and if there are other of my colleagues who would agree, my sense is that as a funder of the program, if we had a specific request, the school district would be definitely open to discussing it. I just don't think that we've come forward with any specific request other than we want to support the program. And so it's, I think it's just a question as to, you know, do we have a specific objective? And I think that's something like we could talk about in the future.
And having sat on the two plus two for a number of years, I would definitely confirm what Cameron said, that's been my impression as well. My understanding is actually there have been plenty of staff-to-staff discussions, if not about the exact site selections, but about which ones are sort of appropriate to do. And ultimately, the reason I posed the question I did was, in fact, related to what you're saying, Matt, is to expand the program, to see whether or not there are things that the school district doesn't necessarily identify that we would identify, okay?
That's correct, and I think we're kind of talking about two different issues. We've had a very cooperative relationship with them. In fact, much of, much of what came to be how these intersections were identified was based on work that the city had done, and traffic, and through safe routes to schools and whatnot. So we have been working hand in hand. This idea about taking a look at other intersections, more from a traffic flow point of view with crossing guards is a slightly different wrinkle than how we've thought about this over the last few years. So certainly, that's something that, you know, we can take the lead on more, the school district probably would like us to take the lead on that more, because it has a little less to do with their student population and a little more to do with our intersections and traffic flow. As you get further and further away from the schools, intersections might be impacted, but with fewer and fewer students. But, you know, we've all seen, for some reason, it seems like everybody under the age of maybe 18 has trouble crossing a street quickly, and we've all sort of seen that and experienced that. And so I agree, it may be, you know, it may be beneficial, we may find some intersections that are beneficial from a traffic flow point of view, more so than a safety point of view. And that still could be a decision the council would like to make, so.
Did you have a follow-up, Matt?
Yeah, so the other question I have is, these contractors that are chosen to run the program, how critically have we looked at that from the city's standpoint? Because again, we're paying for half the program, so choosing the contractor that's going to provide the service, I don't even know how many, it might be the kind of thing where there's very few outfits that provide that service to select from, but have we been involved or looked at what they're doing there at all?
We have not.
Okay. I think we should.
Okay. Mr. Collins.
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to add is, in response to Matt's question, I believe that the two plus, two plus two committee is the city's seat at the table. So I think whatever needs to be discussed can be discussed there. I don't think we need to do anything else.
Okay. Any additional questions for staff? If not, now is the time for public comment. We have one speaker tonight, who is our Safe Routes to School Coordinator, Mindy Hill. Good evening.
Hello. Thank you. My name's Mindy Hill. I'm the Wellness Director for San Carlos, and also serve as a Safe Routes to School Coordinator. And just to give you a little bit more history, I know you're new. When I took this role six years ago, it was the first time we had a Safe Routes to School program. So we worked with Jay Walter and city staff to have very regular meetings to find out what were the hot intersections where city was getting feedback. We conducted walk audits at several of our schools to get professional engineering advice on which intersections needed amendments. The first one was actually Arroyo and Cedar, due to the nature of the way that's configured. The first request from the walk audits was to city to actually square up that intersection. If you could see, it's just at a really odd angle. The city tried to get funding to do that, it was too expensive, and so they said, well, you should put a crossing guard there. And so we did. Unfortunately, Safe Routes to School funds cannot fund crossing guards, and because school district felt it was so important to student safety, this cost comes directly out of our general fund, which is, as some of you know quite well, is very, very tight right now, and actually has been for some time. So we started with that intersection. The next one, city staff actually requested that we add was at Britton and Cedar specifically for traffic control, because traffic was bunched up Cedar for, you know, all the way up to Cresview sometimes. So that crossing guard made a major impact in the mornings, and then we discovered it wasn't so necessary in the afternoon. So we moved that guard to do double duty at Arroyo and Cedar. So in the afternoon, that's a crazy intersection, and both those guards worked that. Each intersection that we've added has actually been in consultation with city engineers, because we've wanted to add them at quite a few intersections, and we have a really specific process that we go through that was created with the engineers. You asked about how the crossing guard company was selected. We originally started with another one, I believe it was called American Guard, and they quickly, we kind of got priced out of them. They couldn't supply enough guards, they wanted to charge a lot of money. So we did an RFP, and the current crossing guard company is, you know, it fit the bill. There aren't many out there, and in fact, there were only two last time we did this. So I know my time's probably up, but I wanted to say just how much we welcome your support. It wouldn't be possible for the school district to do this on its own. We regularly get great feedback from families, you know, who otherwise wouldn't let their kids walk and bike to school. So it's really helping not only the safety, but also the environmental impact. And I do think, to Mr. Olbert's point, there are other places in the city that could benefit, and certainly Cordillares and Bell could benefit by having paid guards there. So I welcome any feedback. We're always happy to come to the table.
Okay. Thank you, Mindy. I appreciate the comments. Mr. Grokaw.
So, yeah, a couple of, well, a question and a comment. Comment is, you mentioned that Arroyo and Cedar was the first intersection, and actually Bell and Cordillares is very similar. And one of the problems with that intersection is that when you're traveling on Cordillares and you're headed south, because of the angle of the intersection, by the time you get to the stopping point for the intersection, the stop sign is behind your view. You don't see it. And that makes it very easy to roll through or run through that intersection without even realizing that it's a stop. It's a problem. I've mentioned it before to city staff, that that's a problem. So I could really see that being added to the program. The question I have for staff on this is, perhaps this comes from being on the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Board for so many years, if we wanted to add intersections, what would be the process with the school district? Because they might say to us, okay, any other intersections you want to add, you pay for 100%. Do we have any kind of agreement that it's always 50/50?
To my knowledge, it has always been 50/50, but I think where we would probably really want to start is the two plus two meetings and have this discussion, but certainly work internally with the district staff to identify those intersections that, from the city staff perspective, you know, how those, how those intersections operate, and then from a school district perspective on how it interfaces, or how the schoolchildren interface with the intersection itself. So I think there's maybe a twofold approach. One is actually have the staffs kind of work, city and district staff work, and then also go through the two plus two process to have this discussion.
And just a comment, in my opinion, maybe I said it the wrong way when I first brought it up, trying to use crossing guards to slow down traffic, that's not exactly what I meant. I misspoke there. Really what I'm saying is, I know there are intersections in town where people are cutting through San Carlos, using it as a, you know, go-through-town to get from 280 to 101, or maybe they work at Oracle over in Belmont or something, and even these map programs and so forth send them through San Carlos. So we do have streets where people are driving too fast, they're on, they're using us as a cut-through, and those streets with those intersections do have kids trying to get to school, and, you know, even on Cedar. You could look at Cedar and Howard, you could look at, you know, some of these other intersections. And that's unsafe to have those unguarded. Having guards there would achieve two things. One, increase the safety for children trying to go to school, and number two, kind of icing on the cake, if you will, is it could potentially slow down the traffic, because there's people there monitoring the intersection. And that's, that's the way I really was thinking of that, not necessarily as, oh, you know, we're going to get you by putting crossing guards where you're trying to drive. So just wanted to correct that statement.
Okay. Any further questions? If not, I will entertain a motion and direct my colleagues to their digital screens.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2018-.
95.
95. I'm waiting for 100. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos agreeing to share in the cost for crossing guard services with the San Carlos School District for fiscal year 2018-19 for an additional, an additional crossing guard location at a cost of $8,321.87, and not a penny more.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Gentlemen, please cast your votes.
Is any discussion?
Oh, is there any discussion? Thank you.
In sending this vote, is there, like I had asked the city attorney, is there any interest in the council of sending a message to the district that we would like to be more included in the process? And it could, I'm not trying to say, Mr. Olbert, that it shouldn't go through two plus two, but, and I've never served on two plus two, so I don't know if, whenever changes are made to this, or when they're going through the selection process for the company they use, does it go through two plus two? Is it always on the agenda? Is it always discussed? That's really what I'm looking for, is just that we do have a seat at the table, and it's not just something that we're funding, and then it happens without much of our input. And, you know, what I've heard is that we have had input, but it does sound like it's unofficial. And what I'm, what I'm after is, if we're going to fund this halfway, it should be something that's more official.
I'm, just speaking for myself, I'm fine with the existing system that we have, and we can change it or stuff as we go forward, but I'm perfectly fine with the way things have worked to date.
I guess, I guess my reaction, Matt, is that I think Mark suggested an action by which we would get some input as to whether or not we want to change things. And so if the staff goes out and says, hey, there's some other intersections where we could increase safety or improve traffic flow, I think by the very nature of doing that, and if there was agreement that, yeah, like, there's some other intersections that we should look at, I feel satisfied that there's a process in place by which we can take it to two plus two and have the conversation and say, hey, we'd like to expand the program. So I don't, it doesn't feel like we need anything more formal than that from where I sit.
So let me ask you this, Mr. Mayor, how about if we go ahead and vote on this, and then can we, before we leave this topic, have a little discussion about whether we would like our Traffic and Transportation Commission to look at safe routes to school intersections and so forth, and analyze this, and perhaps bring something to the council where we might consider expanding the intersections where we have guards?
I mean, I would be fine with that. I think that having a report to the TNC about, you know, the performance of the crossing guard program would be a great thing, an opportunity to have a discussion and to see if there's ideas about how to expand it. So I'm all, I'm all for that.
Okay. So that's two of us. Anybody else?
Unless the two plus two can handle it without the TNC input, then I'm all right with it. But I'd like to get some feedback from Jeff, maybe, as to what your thoughts are. Do we, do we need to go through TNC, or can we just direct our members of the two plus two committee to agendize it for the next meeting?
Well, I mean, if I understand, I had already made the note earlier that the council had asked us to bring back potential additional crossing guard locations that might benefit from either a safety and/or traffic flow improvement perspective. So if the council, so what I'm understanding from the council member Grokaw, you're fine with that.
I'm happy with that.
So whether it goes to TNC or not, we'll just kind of leave it up to the staff, as if we feel like it's appropriate and it fits, we'll take it to TNC, and if not, we'll look at it and we'll do a report to the two plus two committee and agendize it for the council at a future meeting.
Thank you. I'm happy with that. Thank you.
Okay. So now, any further discussion? Sorry about that, thank you for the reminder. And now we'll cast our votes, and all votes have been cast. And the clerk will report the result.
Okay. The item has passed.
All right. Thank you, Crystal. Okay. Finally, tonight, we'll move on to item nine, Council Communications and Announcements. Do we have any announcements? Mr. Olbert.
Thank you, Cameron. Less of an announcement, and actually more, I guess this is an agenda setting or an agenda tweaking idea that I wanted to run by folks and see if there's any interest in. And Christian sort of alluded to this a little bit, although what I'm going to describe is a bit different from what you may have taken away from his comments. As I was getting ready, thinking about the single-family home zoning change recommendations that are going to be coming before us for action, I think it's on October 8th, is that correct, Jeff?
I believe that is correct, yeah.
I started thinking about what I would want to do as, as part of that process, and I realized that I was going to probably have a number of questions that I wanted to ask members of SHAC and members of the Planning Commission, frankly, just so I could, because it is a big, complicated topic, so I could kind of understand a little bit better their thinking and how they made trade-offs, and why some things were included in recommendations and other things weren't, rather than just see the words on the page and have the staff report on it. And then it occurred to me that maybe one of the things that we could do, and we would have to arrange. have to arrange the meeting a little bit differently, is we could invite, I think, the members of Shack and the Planning Commission. We wouldn't require people to show up. We could invite them to show up and basically serve as a panel for us so that if any of us had questions, that we wanted to have a little interactive discussion and sort of see where things were going, just to get a better feel for the shape of what we were going to be acting on, that that might be a useful thing to do. And the more I thought about it, it's like, yeah, I think I actually personally would get a lot of value out of that, given how complex and big this topic is and how long it's been worked. So, that's the idea I wanted to bounce off you guys, to see whether or not folks had an interest in that. I mean, I don't know if that means we have to schedule it as a special meeting, because it probably works better in a library-type environment rather than here. But, you know, that's a detail I'd leave up to staff to figure out how to set it up if we decide that that's something that we want to do. So, the real question is, do the rest of you feel like there'd be some value in doing that? And if so, do we want to give staff direction to do that?
I like the idea. But, so you're proposing not a true council meeting, but, you know, sort of a special meeting where we would invite all those people? Or we just, would we agendize it as a study session at a regular council meeting before we took action?
I wasn't thinking of it as a study session before taking action, although we certainly could do that. Okay? Where I was thinking, Ron, is that, you know, what's going to happen is when, like, this item, like anything else, comes before us. Anybody who wants to address us can come and have two minutes and talk to us. Okay? And my understanding of the law actually is, unlike in the general public comment for a specific item, if we have questions that we wish to ask somebody who spoke to us, we can say, "Hey, what did you mean by that?" Or, you know, you can have some degree of interactivity. My idea is to take folks who, by dint of all of the effort and time they've spent on this, have developed some level of expertise, which I will say, frankly, I suspect is higher than my current level of expertise on the topic, to have them there where we could ask them questions and sort of say, "I don't, you know, can you explain this? Or did you think about this? Or how'd you make that trade-off?" Because I would find that useful in guiding my own thinking about what I want to see the council adopt. And it basically says those people sort of get a somewhat different role than just a resident who shows up and gets two minutes. Okay? By virtue of the fact that we appointed them to these positions, and they spend a lot of time and effort working on our behalf. And, yeah, we're going to get a staff report about what they said, but there's value, I think, to having the ability to ask questions directly of the folks that did all the work. Anyway, that's the thought.
I like the idea. I suppose my only concern is that, you know, could dominate a greater part of the meeting. And I suppose we'd have to think about adjusting the agenda, you know, to have less items. But if there's, I don't know if there's any comment from staff, but I do like the concept because I would like to hear from all those people who have, because we have such divergent ideas. We had Shack who came up with this, and we had Planning Commission came up with this, and we had opposing architects, and I don't have any clear vision of yet where this thing ought to go.
We can certainly reach out to them and invite them and try to help and support them from a staff perspective to be able to do that. Beyond that, I can't really answer. Obviously, as your staff, we want to do and provide all the relevant pieces of information to you to help you make this decision. This is a complex issue, as I think you're all well aware, with a lot of different variables. You know, this is certainly one that's going to be coming to you with four or five large options, of which there are, you know, almost an infinite number of variables. So, if you feel like having those folks here would be beneficial to getting your questions answered and getting yourselves to the point where you can make a decision, we'll reach out and try to make that happen.
I have, I did send an email to Christian Vesia, who was here tonight last week, and he notified me tonight that he got, the purpose of my sending out the email was to meet with him. And so, we've, we're going to set up a time next week where he and I and one other member of his group are, will meet, and I'm just going to ask him questions. But that's just one or two people. So, I really do like, I think Mark's idea has a lot of merit.
Matt, do you have a perspective on this?
Rather than have it be at a meeting where we're going to be taking action, I would prefer actually to have a, I know it might mess up the schedule that's out there now, but I'd rather have a study session where we can get some free input from people where they're not, like you said, they're not limited necessarily to two minutes. I think that'd be a lot more beneficial than having something like that take place on the night we're expected to take action.
Can I hear from the staff about just sort of the timeline of meetings? And is there a specific reason that we're aligning towards the next meeting?
I think we're ready to go. You know, we've been kind of a little bit in a holding pattern for the last month or two as the Planning Commission was working through the process, and we didn't know how many meetings ultimately it was going to take for them. It took them several meetings before they made their recommendation. And once they did that, then we knew that we would be close to ready to be able to come to the council. We were hoping to get the item in front of this iteration of the city council, simply because this was the council that started this process and at least has some level of understanding to this point in the process and why we're here and all that. But there's no magic in doing that. If it takes longer, it takes longer. And I think, as council member Olbert might have made a comment earlier, we can have, we can schedule some special meetings as well to do this, if their council is available to do that. And, you know, in regards to scheduling it as a study session or action item, you can always continue an action item. You know, we definitely have on our radar that this might be an item that the council wasn't going to get through in one meeting. You know, that's always, always been on the radar for us as a real possibility.
Yeah. I mean, I guess my point of view is, I don't feel super strongly about it either way, and I'm happy to go along if the perspective is, we want to have the members of the commissions present. I also just want to be cognizant of the fact that the public may have strong feelings about this, and we want to bring them along in an efficient manner so we don't spread it out over many hours and many days. So, but that being said, you know, I'm fine. I mean, I think the direction is to, as you said, to kind of reach out and to potentially reach out to us individually about potential schedules and see what's workable.
Just for my money, I wouldn't mind a special meeting, separate from a council meeting. Public has not yet weighed in in front of us, and I think that it would be valuable to give people the time to say what their feelings are. We've all gotten lots of emails. There's lots of different opinions. And this is something, I just, I want to get this right. I don't want, you know, and I do realize, and having said that, no matter what decision we ultimately make, there's going to be a particular sizable contingent that are not going to be happy with our decision. But I do want, but I don't want, at the end of the process, for people to say, "You didn't give us a chance to speak." And I've heard, Mr. Vesia said it tonight, I've heard other people say it in the past, they feel like the process is rushed. I tend to disagree with that, but at the end of the process, I don't want anybody to say, "The process was rushed." They probably will anyway, but.
Okay. I think we've got the feedback. That sounds good. Anything else, Mark?
No.
Okay. I saw Matt's light on and off, and now it's back on.
It's back on. Yeah. So, at the last council meeting, I mentioned about the trees downtown. And so, I don't have a report on that, but I was hoping staff would have something, an update on what's going on with the trees that they could make when we get to that part of the, not under council reports, but under staff reports. So, yeah.
Anything additional?
That's it.
Okay. Anything from you, Mr. Collins?
Yeah, just a couple things. I actually realized I had a lot of government-related meetings this month. We had a housing community development committee meeting last week, and it was a meeting where $19 million of federal affordable housing funds were being distributed. And it was, I have to say, it was amazing to me how many projects in the county that were going to be market rate or market rate with some affordable units have turned into all affordable units. And I was very encouraged to see that. There are so many affordable housing developments that are moving, they're progressing forward in Belmont and Redwood City, in Daly City, in San Mateo, I believe. There's even one in Milbrae by the BART station. So, when people say to us, "What's San Carlos doing about affordable housing?", we are doing a couple of things, but I encourage people to take a broader view that San Mateo County really is doing everything it can to tackle the affordable housing crisis that we say, that we face. And then, at a Home for All meeting last week, you know, when I joined that committee, it was called Closing the Housing and Jobs Task Force. Four years ago, the imbalance was 35 to 1. There were 35 jobs for every housing unit being built. It's now 14 to 1. So, again, we are making progress. And I went to a fundraiser, a couple of fundraisers on Saturday. There was an ice cream social at the museum, and one of our residents, I'd like to thank personally and publicly, Kate Wormington, made a substantial donation toward a new water fountain at the museum. So, it was $1,000, and we were, I know that the museum members were very, were flabbergasted and extremely grateful for that. So, thank you publicly to Kate for that kind of a donation. That's it.
That's great. Okay. Finally, staff comments on administrative business.
Let's see. Just, I think, a couple things that I wanted to mention. First, I wanted to thank the over 500 volunteers that we've had participate in the San Carlos Day of Service over the last period of time, sort of culminating this weekend with the events around that. As always, this community never ceases to amaze when it comes to a call for volunteers. There are people volunteering throughout the community in just about every aspect that you can imagine. Also, wanted to remind the public that the Chamber of Commerce will be hosting a city council candidate forum on Tuesday, October 2nd, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. right here in the council chambers. So, tune in, come on down, meet your candidates.
Mr. Mayor, the only thing we forgot to do tonight was to assign some big tasks to Bob Grisilli.
Yeah, I don't know. Unfortunately, I don't think there's anything on the agenda that we can assign to him.
And we can get a quick update for Matt on the trees downtown.
Good evening. Stephen Machida, Fire Department Director. So, at the last meeting, or after the last meeting, actually, we were able to contact our arborist in regards to the trees kind of emitting that sap. And the sap is actually from a result of aphids that he has actually indicated that it's kind of plagued the whole kind of Bay Area. And it's, unfortunately, it is probably one of the worst years that he has seen. Typically, how we control the aphids is actually we do a systemic treatment where basically we go through the roots, and that kind of deals with some of the environment where the aphids want to actually come in and infest the trees themselves. We're really reluctant to use any type of insecticide on the trees itself to control aphids, mainly because there is a lot of eating establishments, as well as any other, you know, people in the downtown where the insecticides could affect obviously the establishments or just that entire downtown. So, we actually went with the insect, excuse me, the systemic type of treatment. Unfortunately, you know, there's a certain period of time where we could do it. We actually did it once in the spring, and we also did one here just recently. However, we're not sure that this one recently is actually going to be really effective because as we head towards the fall, where the leaves start dropping, basically, the aphids go away. However, what we are planning to do is kind of increased street and sidewalk washing. I know that, you know, we are talking to the Chamber of Commerce as far as their activities in the downtown, but certainly, we're looking at doing a more of an increased washing of the streets and sidewalks themselves.
Thank you very much. Okay. Unless there's anything further, meeting adjourned.